Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 5th. And I'm glad to see that we have a full room. People interested in the first topic, which is public comment. And I'm going to start with an opening statement. There is a sign-up sheet for speakers in the back, Kate? So when we get to the end of the statement, I'll ask someone to bring the sign-up sheet forward and hear the public comments. So here's my opening statement. This evening, this board is providing those who wish to speak to us on behalf of Brookline Police Officers Estefanos Zaray-Miskun, who is affectionately called, I'm told, called Officer Z, and I'll call him Officer Z, it's a lot easier to pronounce, and Officer Prentice Pilot, at our last meeting the opportunity to do so. As I stated in an email to town meeting members recently, on reflection, if I had to do it over again, I would have handled the request to speak a lot differently. So I'm going to begin this session with a few comments. In December 2014, Police Officers Z, Officer Pilot, and the third officer met with Chief O'Leary to report that Officer Z had experienced a number of racially insensitive comments made by his coworkers. Chief O'Leary responded immediately to this report in a manner that he believed appropriately addressed the conduct that had been reported. No further reports of discriminatory conduct were received by Chief O'Leary until one year later. On December 7th, 2015, when Officer Pilot informed the chief that a coworker had used a racial slur in a conversation with him on December 4th. Chief O'Leary responded immediately to this report by initiating a prompt internal investigation and referring the matter for formal review under the town's policy against discrimination or retaliation, along with the recommendation that this matter be investigated by an outside independent investigator. That investigation, along with the investigation of recent allegations made by Officer Z, has now begun. This board is obligated under law and town policy to ensure that a fair and impartial investigation of reports such as these are conducted. In addition, the chief instructed all members of the department that discriminatory conduct will not be tolerated. In response to the officers' concern about their safety, Chief O'Leary has provided me with assurances of their safety, and both officers have been informed by him that should they encounter any future discriminatory or retaliatory conduct at work, prompt action will be taken. I am confident in Chief O'Leary's commitment, I've known him for a long time, and his ability to ensure these officers' safety at work, and today am unaware of any basis upon which we should think otherwise. My own message to Officers Z and Pilot is this: I'm grateful for the work that you've done on the town's behalf, and you're valued members of our police department. We sincerely hope that you'll return to work with the understanding and belief that the chief, this board, and the town, as demonstrated by the turnout here, will fully support you. I believe that most of you in the audience this evening have come forward because you're sincerely concerned about the welfare of these officers. My message to you is that this board shares your concerns and will ensure that these officers' reports of their experiences at work are thoroughly and appropriately addressed. I know I speak for each of my colleagues in stating that we're all committed to social justice and believe strongly that discriminatory conduct in town employment is unacceptable. It's our intent to ensure that decisions in these and all other employment matters are just, fair, and fact-based. However, in a just and fair world, we cannot rely on just one version of the facts. We're rightly beholden to the laws of this Commonwealth, including provisions of civil service and employment law. I want to state categorically that all individuals involved in these matters will be afforded due process and appropriate standards of fairness and privacy will be respected. Should the incidents leading to these reports be substantiated, appropriate discipline for those who are responsible will be imposed, and prompt action will be taken to address any necessary changes in the workplace. To be absolutely clear, there will be no tolerance for discrimination or related retaliation against any employee of the Brookline Police Department on the basis of race or other protected class or characteristic. I urge you to consider, before formulating and delivering your comments, that there is information that we have not been able to share with the public to date. We're here tonight as your elected public officials, who've chosen to serve as essentially volunteers out of goodwill for the town, for all its employees, and for all of you. A number of the pertinent department heads are also here tonight to listen to what you have to say. They've worked very hard to address the concerns raised by these police officers and by firefighter Alston previously, and I can assure you they strongly share your values and concerns and are committed to continuing to do so. You may not know fully what they've done, for tonight I simply ask that you consider what you may not know. Ask yourself if you're stating a conclusion about the facts or a public official's intent. What's the data that underlies it? Is it possible that your conclusion would be different if you had more complete access to information? Finally, I want to be clear about what isn't going to happen tonight. We're dealing with personnel matters and are constrained about what we're allowed to say publicly by law and policy. We're also constrained by the lawsuit that's been filed against the town and some of us in federal court, and I'll introduce Mr. Doug Lewison, who's representing us in that action, who's sitting in the front. Some of us have been named individually in that lawsuit, and counsel has cautioned us against speaking publicly about matters that pertain to that lawsuit. We will not be making any decisions tonight about these personnel matters. Instead, we will be listening to you. Brookline has a long history and tradition of civil-public discourse. I've been involved in Brookline Town Government now for 16 years, and I've seen many controversial issues discussed and debated with dignity and respect. I ask that you continue this tradition this evening. So I'm going to now turn to the public comment period, and I'd like to state a few rules. So first, I'd like to limit public comment to three minutes per speaker, and at the end of two minutes, when there's one minute remaining, I'll hold up the one-minute sign, and when it's time to conclude, I'll hold up the please-conclude sign. And please, respect that. And speakers may not donate time to another speaker. Personal attacks are not in the tradition of Brookline's civil-public discourse and will be ruled out of order. Let me also say that if someone's already said what you're going to say, it's perfectly okay to say you agree with the prior speaker and then make another point, and I would suggest to you that that would be a better use of your time than to just be repeating the same thing. And also, if you wish, you can submit written comments to our recording secretary, or by email to patty parks@brooklinema.gov, and it'll be entered into the record. And that's especially useful if you don't have time to complete your oral remarks in three minutes. So another thing I'll add is, this is a public comment period, and this is not an examination of the board, and we will not be answering questions. So with that, the way I'm going to handle this, I'm going to take the speakers in the order that they're on the list, and I'll announce the first speaker, and then I'll announce who's on deck. So the first speaker is Bob Miller, and on deck is Merrillise.
Hi. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to address you. My name is Bob Miller. I've been a resident of Brookline for 35 years. I'm a teacher in Brookline. I volunteer on a lot of boards in Brookline. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 8. I've always been proud to be a part of Brookline. I love my students. I love my neighbors. I love the town that I live in. For years, I've heard talk about racism in Brookline, and perhaps it's my unsought white privilege, perhaps it's my desire not to believe that that was true. I know I didn't want to believe that that was true in this town. For whatever reason, though, this has not been an issue that's been front and center for me. I just met Officer Z tonight, but I've known Officer Pilot for many years through my role as a teacher in Brookline schools. Every year Officer Pilot comes into my classroom, and he teaches my sixth graders about how to keep safe. And probably even more importantly, he teaches my students that police officers do not always mean something's wrong, that they're somebody who they can go to and can trust and can get help from. And I think for a middle school student, this is particularly important. So I may be late to this game, or this idea, but the thing that I want to emphasize, now that this has come to me in a more personal and more direct way, I want to highlight the importance of this issue. And I'm assuming that I don't need to do that, but I feel compelled to do that because of the fact that for so long I haven't felt compelled to do that. And I urge you to act, you know, well, first of all, from my point of view, this is an issue which can destroy the town that I love. Brookline being known as a racist community is not the place that I love. It's not the place that I teach, and it's not the neighbors that I live with. And I urge you to act with the force and determination that's demanded by charges of racism. And I understand that you can't address the specifics, that people are innocent until proven guilty, but I would urge you to use the strongest possible terms and the strongest possible actions to let it be known that this cannot and will not be tolerated in the town of Brookline. And that does not say that people are guilty of any particular issue. It says that this will not be tolerated, not by the Board of Selectmen, not by the citizens of this town, not today and not ever.
Thank you, Merrillise, and then Pat Bartels. And if I mispronounce any names, please accept my apology upfront. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Merrillise. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 6, and served the town in many capacities. I wish us all a Happy New Year, and in some respects, a new Brookline. The key message that I got at the last meeting was when someone said that he didn't come here because he wanted you to comment, he wanted you to listen. I suggest that the most well-meaning and even experienced white person in the civil rights arena can never afford to stop listening and learning from those who know best their daily experiences. Author John Harmon observed in The Cycle of Silence that to really listen means to be willing to change. So really listening means you know it's possible to change. It means changing what we expect from ourselves as stewards of our government. It means creating a movement based on love, and let's not be reluctant to use that word. It's time for the town to be proactive instead of reactive. People who are hurting because of discriminatory practices want mitigation. At a select board meeting, I heard people of color and town employees being told that it would be harmful to turn to the Human Relations Commission if they did not get satisfaction regarding racist or discriminatory behavior. The rationale that was given: Don't go public with your stories because you might do or say something to endanger your case in court. But suppose people don't want to become plaintiffs, to have their situation escalate to a lawsuit? Suppose, just suppose, they seek restoration, not retaliation, restorative justice rather than punitive justice, in other words, to be heard. Without mitigation, without an avenue in which their grievances can be openly and honestly addressed, their only route becomes litigation, and the town has to react accordingly. I don't have time to go into the historic detail that I did when I spoke at town meeting, but the U.S. has a long history of affirmative action for whites. It's built into our structures and into our personal practices. It's so normal, we don't even notice that it's happening. We need to start noticing, because it has an adverse effect on who we are and what values we want to uphold. Let's have the courage to really listen to voices that might make us uncomfortable. I suggest that what we hear tonight is the tip of the iceberg in this town.
Pat Bartels, and up after Pat is Frank Powdermilk, Powdermilk, please excuse me if I can't read the handwriting or mispronounce your name.
My name is Pat Bartels, and I'm a Brookline resident. I am the mother of two children that went through Brookline Elementary Schools as well as BHS. My comments tonight have to do with being a mother of Brookline students, as well as now a Brookline grandmother. I'm going to approach you to give you a little picture to look at. Sorry, I'm a grandmother. It's of one of my children's wedding group. If you would just take a look at the boy's side, okay? My partner and I moved to Brookline because we believed it was going to be a caring and liberal community, where our children could be raised and in a way that our values would be matched by the school, by the police, by the town. The picture that I am circulating for them has to do with my son's marriage in October. The reason I am so proud of this picture is that when we came together for this marriage, the five males who were at my son's side as his groomsmen, one came from Bulgaria, one came from Cape Verde, one was a Korean guy, one was a guy who had come from Bulgaria, sorry, anyway. There were five guys, they were from all over the world, and those were the boys who stood up for my son for his wedding. When we saw that, we said, that just makes us so proud. This is the town we lived in. These are the students he grew up with. Those are the values that they shared as friends. So when I hear of something happening with professional officers in this town that discredits them, dishonors them, I am not a happy citizen. And I hope that a good thing will come out of this, that the town will become more thoughtful about hiring and work with employees, and that we will become a better town for this. Thank you.
Frank, can you tell me your last name?
Good evening. My name is Frank Powdermaker.
Powdermaker, sorry. And Leslie Epps is up next.
There is a unique opportunity here. Victims who have felt it useless in the past or dangerous to come forward with their experiences should make use of this opportunity and join the courageous victims we have already heard about. People within the police department, intimidated or not, have an unusual opportunity and choice too. It may not be the easiest choice or comfortable to support these officers, but it's the right thing to do, and there may never be a better time to be on the right side of this issue. We have heard confirmation from within the Brookline Police Department that there is blatant racism in the department. There has already been a report commissioned by the Selectmen surveying members of the police department, confirming racism, and fear of retaliation. Outside of the department, many citizens, especially minorities, have been aware of a racism problem for years. For anyone who hasn't heard firsthand from their minority acquaintances about their abusive experiences with the Brookline Police, I recommend a visit to traffic court across the street on any day that they're having a session. There, the results of the minority profiling that goes on in this town will be an eye-opener. If there are any people within the Brookline Police Department that engage in or allow racist behavior directed at fellow workers, is it any wonder that similar behavior continues out on the street against civilians? Now, we vote for Selectmen with the hope that they will demonstrate fortitude, common sense, and respond to issues according to the magnitude and potency of the issue. But that is not happening here. It is disturbing that this meeting and subject had to be forced, and we only have some citizens to thank for the discussion we are having at this moment. I wonder why this report commissioned by the Selectmen entitled "Racial Climate Review Survey, November 2015," as damning as it is, hasn't been acted upon. Instead, another report has been commissioned, and the chief of police has now also issued a study of the problem of racism in the department. But he's already been told point-blank that the problem exists by his own officers. Politicians often outsource studies when they don't want change or responsibility. There are already laws that address these problems, but unless people in charge do their jobs, no new laws, commissions, or studies will matter, and things won't change.
Leslie Epps, and Linda Roseman is next.
Good evening, and I am thankful that I'm here today to be able to come before you all. I am the only African-American-owned business in Brookline, eight years now. I also am the president and founder of a nonprofit organization that works with disadvantaged youth. I can say personally, my 19 years of being here in Brookline, I was a school nurse for 10 years. I've experienced such racism, refined racism, that I equate to being civilly raped. I have had police target me, my son. I have filed complaints, sent them certified return receipt, electronic receipts, and these complaints have disappeared. I don't know what type of liberal town that you profess to have, and I have been looking to vacate Brookline. But I said to myself, I'm an African-American woman, 51-years-old. I've invested 19 years here in Brookline, and I will not be moved. I am here to stand. I intend to make myself comfortable in Brookline, and I expect that you will all oblige, with respect and dignity. I happen to have landed on the front page of the Brookline tab. I was my own self-appointed keynote speaker for the Martin Luther King Celebration. I hit the front page, half a page, full colored picture and all. The results of that were continued targeting by Brookline Police, ticketing my vehicles falsely, citing me for texting while driving, and me needing to pull texting records to prove the false allegations. Plainclothes police officers being dropped off in front of my shop, directly in front of my shop. Do the math, the square footage in my shop is only 200 square feet. I don't understand how an officer can randomly wind up in front of my shop, posted there, as this subtle intimidation. I am not afraid. I am 51-years-old, and I carry a diagnosis of post-traumatic stress disorder at the hands of Brookline Police. You all did not want to hear my case. I came before you presented my case. The calibration on your time clocks were somehow in error, where the three minutes got terminated prior to three minutes. I've had enough. I will definitely stay here in Brookline. My son has been awarded an Unsung Hero Award by the Brookline Foundation. I have had money donated to the Brookline Foundation under me for having served this town. I refuse to be moved. This is my country. My ancestors paid a debt for me to stand here and tell you I will not be moved, and I am looking for restorative justice, by any means necessary.
Linda Roseman, and on deck is Gems Domerson.
I'm Linda Roseman. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 14. I've been in Brookline since 1979. I've been in Brookline since 1979. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 14. I'm heartsick over the allegations of racism being brought by Officers Pilot and Officer Z. Whatever the outcome of the investigation, my sincere hope is that Chief O'Leary will immediately implement mandatory training for all officers to ensure that everyone on the force is on the same page regarding racial tolerance, and there must be zero tolerance for racist language and behavior. I think it's safe to say that no one person in this room knows all the facts concerning what happened and what is currently happening in regard to these allegations. As my mother always says, "There are three sides to every story: this side, that side, and something in between." As much as we would all like a swift response and resolution to this matter, due process is required and must be respected, and it can take time. I just hope the officers who made the complaints are dealt with respectfully and justly as they await the outcome. I think this hearing is an important first step, but I would love to see more dialogue, obviously not in this venue, but I think that it would be good to begin a dialogue about racism in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Gems Domerson, and correct my pronunciation if necessary, and Shifra Freewoman is on deck. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Selectmen. My name is Gems Domerson. And I am a teacher at Runkel, here in Brookline. My family moved here from Colorado in search of I grew up in Miami, and especially being black male in Miami, there was constant harassment, constant racial profiling. I almost didn't get into the Air Force because of too many broken-tail-like tickets. Or I fit the description of someone who just committed a crime. I was being pulled over weekly. So I got into the Air Force, and what was interesting is that I became a police officer in the Air Force. I'm on the other side. Now, I had various duties while I was in the Air Force as a cop. I was in law enforcement, I was in base security, I was in nuclear weapons security. I was also a member of the SWAT team during my time in the Air Force. One of the benefits living near High Street, and that was one of the reasons why we moved here, was that our kids and myself, we can see people like me walking down the street. It was one of the criteria of moving from Colorado to here, and we specifically chose Brookline, not anywhere else. We chose Brookline, and one of the best things was, we wanted was excellent schools for our boys. But it also had to be where we can see each other. Now, at times, it's difficult being an African male, African-American male, where you always have to prove something. You always have to prove yourself, because there's always something, there's always someone that has that fear, and you always have this automatic reaction of making people feel comfortable. Now, myself being a black male, it's—I can understand it's hard for me. Now, imagine how hard it is for officers of color in your department who are charged with protecting everyone and charged with keeping the town safe. And when they don't feel that they're safe on the job, that's disturbing. Now imagine how that feels to the rest of the town that is supposed to feel safe, if the officers don't even feel safe. How does that look? And it doesn't make any sense that we have to be here at this forum to get at least some understanding, or basically, can you figure out a way to have this done fairly and watch this very closely? And everyone needs to keep their eyes open, because it's been closed for too long.
Shifra Freewoman, and after Ms. Freewoman is Arthur Conquest.
Hi, my name is Shifra Freewoman, and I've lived in this town for about twelve years, and I'm not a member of the in-crowd in this town. And so, I've never felt particularly comfortable here. And I have to say that I went into Leslie Epps's shop, and I spent about five dollars, and she treated me like gold, like no one, no other businessperson I have ever encountered in my entire adult life has ever treated me that well. And it breaks my heart that somebody like that is so mistreated. And I have personally witnessed—I saw the police come into my apartment building and ask a man who was quietly watching television, an African-American man, to show his ID card. And everybody black that I know has encounters with the police in this town. And as far as I can tell, it's not personal towards anyone in the board, because I really don't know anyone of the select people here well at all. But I don't have a lot of faith in this body, because I don't see that the firefighter got any justice whatsoever. And I think that—I'm glad that so many people here are raising our voices, because, as I said, I don't—I don't—I don't have a sense of trust in this board, and it seems that there are committees and discussions and all kinds of nice words, but they don't translate into clear action. And I don't—I don't generally feel comfortable with the police, because I don't care for people who carry guns around. That's just my own personal thing. But I don't know Prentice that well, but he is very endearing and very down-to-earth, and it is heartbreaking that someone like him, that I don't feel afraid of, runs into those kind of problems. And I'm just tired, in general, of my friends everywhere in this country facing this. And I know when I drive in a car with a black person, there's a really good chance that the police are going to stop us, and that happened to me, you know, a couple, about a month ago. And it's a new year, okay? And we all grew up with racism. I don't know, if you lived in this society, you grew up with it. I grew up with it. And we all have it inside of ourselves, no matter who we are. But what are we going to do about it? I want to see action. I don't want more pretty words and commissions. I want action. I want people to feel safe in this town. I don't want anyone to be targeted in this town. I want action. And if this board can't do it, then let's elect another board to serve us. Let's get it done.
Mr. Conquest, and Ed Lockler is next.
Don't start the clock yet, please.
Nope.
Arthur Conquest, 115 Tappan Street. Thank you very much. What kind of individual or political system would be so evil and inhumane and do what the Board of Selectmen in Brookline have done to black firefighter Gerald Alston, which is to basically destroy his life simply because he objected to a white supervisor leaving a racial epithet on his answering machine? And who's to say the same fate will not be met by the two black Brookline police officers now claiming racial slurs were directed at them by their fellow white officers? The political system presently in place, from the top to the bottom in Brookline, is corrupt. Every selectman presently sitting on the dais was a former member of the advisory committee. And now, how does one become a member of the advisory committee? You are selected by the town moderator. If one stands up for social justice and opposes racism in the town, you can forget about becoming a member of the advisory committee or being a selectman who wields power. You can say you are opposed to racism, but just don't do anything concrete to eliminate it. This is exactly how the corrupt system works, because when it's—because when this crowd goes home tonight and the camera lights have been turned off, the Board of Selectmen will retreat, will retreat behind closed doors, and they'll appoint some phony committee made up of their bagmen or women, whose job it is to hoodwink and—to hoodwink the concerned citizens who have taken the time to come out tonight to stand up against racism, simply examine closely how the Diversity, Inclusion, and Human Relations Commission is now structured. This is how the system has worked for the past three decades. How many in the audience remember the Toby Miller case circa 1980? How about the corrupt Citizens Complaint Review Committee in 2008? And the phony committee that reviewed racism at the country club? In 1967, Dr. King said, "For the past twelve years, we have been in a reform movement. But after Selma and the Voting Rights Bill in 1965, we've moved into a new era, which must be an era of revolution." I think we must see the great distinction between a reform movement and a revolutionary movement. Dr. King was saying that revolution would raise certain basic questions about the whole society. This means a revolution of values and other things. The whole structure of American life must be changed. Just give me one more second, please. Okay? Thank you. Those in the audience who are committed to social justice, fair play, and expunging the disease of racism from our community must organize themselves into a third political force à la Senator Bernie Sanders and change who was elected to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Ed Lockler, and after Mr. Lockler is Lee Smith.
Thanks for holding this hearing. I am Ed Lockler. I've lived in Brookline about thirty years, and I am a town meeting member from Precinct Eight. And I'd like to address two points about Brookline's employment and hiring practices. The first is that we need better data and better data management. A group of us, a group called Mass Occupy Brookline, decided that we wanted to evaluate the race and ethnicity of town employees. And then I was going to analyze it as a scientist and a mathematician. So these are my conclusions. First off, the data was not readily available. You'd think you'd be able to walk in and ask for it, and somebody would be able to hand it to you very quickly, and we had to go multiple times, and it was this scrap of paper and that scrap of paper. Second, the data was not in a clear and consistent format. I couldn't figure out how to compare data year to year. So for example, in our report, in our report, in 2004, we had three hundred and sixteen elementary classroom teachers in Brookline. In 2006, we had a hundred and eighty-two elementary classroom teachers. We lost a hundred and thirty-four elementary classroom teachers, according to our reports, in two years. And from that, I concluded that no one was really watching over the data to make sure it was accurate and consistent, so it'd be useful. No one was analyzing the data, and nobody cared about the data. So how can we, as a town, assess our employment and hiring practices if the data is not available, it's not managed, it's not consistent, it's not analyzed, and no one cares about it? The second point I'd like to make has to do with the need for targets to guide hiring practices. Now, I'm not talking about formal quotas. I'm talking about informal targets. It's not enough to assume that people are going to just work on good-faith gestures, "Oh, next time, we'll make sure that we get the right people, we hire more diversity" and the like. Let's just take an example. I emphasize this is just an example, because I do math. So let's imagine that we have thirty employees in a particular position or department, and one employee is a minority. Let's say that we decide that we want ten percent of minorities as a reasonable target. Again, this is just an example. And furthermore, we decide that we want to reach that target in a reasonable amount of time, let's say ten years. Let's say that, on average, with our new hires occur every three years, the math tells us that in the next three hires, two must be minorities. The math doesn't lie. So I think we need to establish informal targets, and we need to do the math so that we knew how to concretely make progress towards a more proper, just, and equitable level of diversity in our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, and Dan Arroyo is up next.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lee Smith, and I am a former Brookline police officer.
Please.
My name's Lee Smith, and I'm a former Brookline police officer. And what I find very interesting tonight, in particular, was Mrs. Epps—
Ms. Epps.
Ms. Epps, I'm sorry— —comment about receiving tickets. I guess you weren't one of the good old boys, because I, this is the tickets they used to use when I was on, ladies and gentlemen. And one afternoon, I wrote a ticket on an automobile, and my supervisor, at that time, was Sergeant Michael Raskin. He chewed me up and down for writing that ticket. He says, "You know, that car belongs to a friend of mine." And I said, "Well, so what?" He says, "Well, we have a policy here. If you're writing a ticket, and it's for a friend, you put a line through the ticket." Now, when you put that line through that ticket, when it's being processed, they know to discard it. They rip it up and toss it away. And the reason you do that is in case someone's seeing you ticketing other cars and you're somehow skipping past a particular car. Now, I don't know how they're doing it these days, because I understand there's a new system. But I am certain that they have figured out some type of technique whereby it can be identified when there's a friend involved. The next thing I want to speak about is this so-called diversity training. I saw a little bit of that, and I'll tell you what happened. They brought in a gentleman, and they put a film up, and you look, and it showed white police officers, black police officers, and how they coordinated with each other and got along together. What was interesting about this so-called diversity meeting is that the guys were sitting there complaining, "Why do we have to be here for this?" And I'm sitting here, I'm watching this, and these are the same people that I'm working with on the street complaining because they have to sit in a film watching diversity on racial relationship. Well, when that meeting ended, I want you to know that the material that the man gave to us to read, I saw guys ripping it up, tossing it in the trash, right in front of this man's face. How disgraceful. And it's this sort of thing that goes on—you know, you cannot take prejudice out of individuals. It's something that these people—you either have it or you don't. And unfortunately, what I find is a lot of these guys, they're friends, and they grew up together in most cases. I was an outsider. I come—I'm originally from New York City, but I live in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So I didn't fit in, well, these are my buddies, these are my pals, so I didn't fit in that category. And as a consequence, I had—I've issued some material for people to read. My time is up, but read the material. I had a very tough time when I was working in Brookline as a police officer. Eventually, the Board of Selectmen got rid of me. So that's how it all ended up. You should know, read the material, and anyone that wants to contact me, feel free to reach me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dan Arroyo, and then Officer Z is next.
A privilege. First of all, it's a privilege to talk before Officer Z. As the Board of Selectmen recognized me, I was the gentleman in the last meeting who was yelling in the corner, not at you. When I think about it more when I went home that night, it wasn't at you guys. I even said before, I think you're all successful, smart, intelligent people. The way we handled the solution last time was—we started this meeting today with a respect, but it wasn't like that last time. And I think that was the biggest thing for me, is that I worked at the high school. I work in an organization called Steps to Success. We work with all low-income people and students. And I think that the question here tonight is not about racism. I grew up facing a lot of different racial terms, situations, and if anybody here has some shade in their skin, they know what I'm talking about. For all my allies and friends who are white, Caucasian, any other color you want to speak about, you'll never know what it is to live our lives, but it doesn't mean that you guys are racist. I think it's a statement to say that we're not racist. We all have some prejudices, like we just said previously a few speakers ago, but what do we do with that feeling? What do we do with those emotions? You guys on the board, I think it's an issue, not you guys, but the fact that, like you said, Neil, you guys almost volunteer here. You barely get paid money, five K a year, you know? You probably work twenty-five, maybe thirty hours a week, plus whatever other things you guys are doing. So this topic, though, racism, we don't need volunteers to fight this battle. We need people who are willing to give more than just—than maybe what you guys can give us. Respectfully speaking, I want to be respectful with this. I'm not saying this is on you guys, but we do need some help with this issue. And we're all here—you guys have—you guys know the turnout in town meetings. This is ridiculous. You know people care in this town about this. You know they do. And so all I ask today is, where's our leadership? And so all I ask today is, where's our leadership? Right? I'm not saying you guys aren't being leaders, but we do need to step up in this situation. And that's all we're asking for. We're asking for some transparency. You're talking about SWIFT, and I read these reports about SWIFT. What does SWIFT mean? Is it a month? Is it six months? I understand due process. I have a master's degree. I understand all this stuff. But what is the due process laid out for us? It's almost like you're saying things, not you. But people are saying things, and there's no transparency to what's going on. So as an employee, as for this town, you know, I'm 28 years old. I just had a newborn who was born in St. Elizabeth's. I'm excited to be here, you know? I love the people I work with. A lot of them are back here supporting us. But I just don't know where this town is going. And I'm scared for my kid, and my girlfriend is also a teacher in Brookline. I'm scared for my kid to come here, when there's a lot of racial profiles. And if you guys hadn't seen it, let me just tell you personally, it's out there. Right? It's out there. I hear from my kids, who I work at that high school, there's incidents that happen with cops and my students at the high school, and you've seen it in the papers. I'm not saying race was a huge issue there, but it was an issue, and the transparency for me was not appropriate. You know? No parents at a meeting where there's a chief and a superintendent? That's scary. That's not what I want my kids to see and go through. So my question here is, where's our leadership? But more importantly, can you guys at least, not personally, but help us take this next step into finding out how do we create more transparency, and how do we protect the officers? A student who I would have, he would have been my student. He would have been my student, because he was in Steps Two. Right? And I would, and I'm here to help support him. So I'm asking you guys, how can we create more transparency, define what SWIFT means so some of us will stop questioning you about this? Right? And then step up and help us figure out what's the next step around racism in this town? Before it happens, before Michael Brown or somebody happens in our town, on our watch, that's the last thing I want. And I'd be damned if that's my kid that it happens to.
Officer Z, and after Officer Z is Officer Pilot.
I'm Officer Z. Everybody, thank you for coming out to support us tonight. I just want to start off with saying that, you know, you speak of the chief's assurance, and you're comfortable with that. He gave me his assurance a year ago, to date, and nothing changed. We went to the Diversity Commission weeks ago, and nothing has changed. Went to you weeks ago, and you walked out, and nothing has changed. And now all you say is that you're waiting, and you can't give out certain information because you're doing investigation. What investigation? Nobody has contacted me. I've been wasting my sick days sitting at home with no pay. Two days before Christmas, I got a letter saying that my pay was stopped, and I'm considered AWOL. So when you convey this message or this perception that you are doing your job, it is a lie.[797.23][797.23](APPLAUSE). Two white firefighters were arrested, and they were put on paid administrative leave until it's fully investigated. Two black officers who did nothing wrong are told, are demanded to come back to work. It is not a safe environment there, and you can't assure us it is until it's fully investigated.[821.76][821.76](APPLAUSE). The chief failed me last year, when it happened, when Prince was called a nigger, one year after I was told who would put a black man behind one of these unmarked cars. And now you're failing me today. That's all.
Officer Pilot, and Ronald Wilkinson is next.
Evening. My name is Prentice Pilot. I'm a resident of the town, and I've been a police officer for over 17 years. So if you'll forgive me, I'm going to face the crowd, because I want to thank you guys for coming and doing what you've done, because we wouldn't be here right now if you haven't, hadn't shown some support. And I'm not asking, you know, I heard you say that, you know, nothing's going to get adjudicated here, and it shouldn't be, and you should have your, you know, your processes and your investigations. But I found it interesting, as SD said, you know, a year ago, December 23rd, actually, myself, Officer Zarai, and another African-American officer went to the chief and talked to him about some racial incidents that had taken place. And, you know, it's funny, because there was no contact from Human Resources or anyone else with myself. Was there with you? No. And I don't believe with the other officer. Now, here we are, a year later. I bring this up. And the chief had an investigation about it, a preliminary investigation. About a week and a half later, that investigation is done. He says it's inconclusive, and I'm to return to work, with no mention of my concerns for my safety in the workplace environment. That was December 16th. A week later, and that's the night, funnily enough, I got that letter delivered to my home by police officers 20 minutes before I wanted to go to the Diversity Committee meeting to hear the findings of this Town of Brookline Workforce Diversity Survey in the Fire and Police Departments. So we go to that meeting, and the committee, they were, they expressed concerns for what we had said. There was Police Commissioner Bernard Green, who's sitting up here tonight, who was there, and they requested of him that he say something to us. He get more of a story, more of the story. I haven't heard anything from him. You know, than what happened on the 23rd. We all know that. Anyway, this Town of Brookline Workforce Diversity Survey of the Police and Fire Department, on page 73, they talk about the insights from the Police Department leadership, and it's fascinating. The headline is, "Leadership believes there are no major issues with diversity and inclusion in the Police Department. However, the recent incident put the idea of equal treatment into question." I'm assuming they're talking about the Gerald Austin case. Then, continuing on with the leadership, I'm sorry, would you let me know when he holds up the red sign? "The town, the town's making a bigger deal out of the incident than it has to, making for a negative atmosphere." Okay? Well, it sounds to me like it makes, might make them uncomfortable. Right below that slide of this beautiful PowerPoint, it says, "Talking to some of the officers, some of the officers, I guess, responded by saying, 'There's more than one race and Hispanics who feel that they will be at risk of retaliation.'" "Asian African-Americans and other genders are not satisfied with the leadership." So it's fascinating to me, because the chief had a free diversity report when the three of us went to him on December, in December of 2014. I don't know if you guys understand what I'm saying. Okay? So, I don't know. I want to thank you guys for coming out here. This is not a problem about, about Officer Zarai and I. This is a problem for us. So I don't have faith in, in the investigatory processes of the Police Department. I'm just putting that out there.
Next up is Ron, Ronald Wilkinson, and after Mr. Wilkinson is Ginger Melton.
My name is Ronald Wilkinson. I've lived in Brookline continuously for the past 25 years, and counting, in a minute times before that, probably 30 years altogether. I'm a member of First Parish in Brookline. A lot of my fellow parishioners are here, and I'm one of the coaches of our Diversity Caucus. I grew up in New York City in the 50s and 60s, and three of my uncles were African-American New York City police officers. So I resonate both as an African-American male and as someone who has been close to people who have worked very hard to, to protect, protect their citizens at danger to themselves. My, also, I would say, my wife is, is South Asian. I've had nieces and nephews come up through the Brookline school system, people of color. And one of the reasons why we have valued Brookline was because, in the Brookline school system, we do have a very wide variety of people from different countries, different nationalities, and we consider that to be very important. I'm very, very, very concerned about everything I've heard and understood about the way people are treated here. I've actually been lucky. In the 25 years I've been in Brookline, I actually have not been, had a negative relationship with, with the police. Mostly, they've just pretty much just ignored me. Sometimes I joke because I'm small and geeky, whatever. But I have no doubt about what I'm hearing. I certainly understand what it means when people who are, say, closet racist, they don't say anything blatantly, but when they can get away with it, they do. And they behave in those kinds of ways. And one of my deepest concerns about the investigation is that it will just be a situation where the people of color simply say what their experience has been, and the people who perpetrated those negative things simply say, "No, it's not true. We didn't do it." And the people in charge don't have any way that they consider objective of telling the difference between, it's just that he said, he said, the other guy said, "What do we do? It's inconclusive." The trouble is, you can never expect someone who's a racist to admit they're a racist if there's going to be any kind of retaliation, any kind of consequences, so you could possibly crush that kind of a process. That doesn't mean I have a good idea of how best to go about it so that it works, but we've got to do something, and we have to recognize how difficult it's going to be. I just want to say that I'm very, very glad, very glad that we've got the turnout that we've had, because I think it shows once and for all that the people in this town will not tolerate racism, that we will move forward, we will do whatever it takes to be done, even if we have to keep working on the best way to do it.
Ginger Melton, and after Ms. Melton is Abram Chipman.
I'm very glad to be here tonight, and I'm even happier still to see how many people are here tonight to talk about this crucial, crucially important issue in Brookline, and in Massachusetts, and across the United States. I'm a sociologist. My area of specialty is in race and gender conflict, in particular, in the workplace. I'm also in an interracial marriage. My husband Jemz, our son Mackey, and we have another son. They go to school at Lincoln. We came here, we were thrilled to find the ideal place across the country to raise our kids. We came here because of the diversity of Brookline. We came here because it is liberal and open-minded, and people care about issues of diversity. And yet, I still see racism at Lincoln School. I see it in the curriculum. I see it in how the administrators respond to the kids of color in the halls versus the white kids.[1396.26][1396.26](APPLAUSE). And it breaks my heart. I don't want my boys to be raised, to be raised up in this. When I was single and white, I didn't see any racism. It was nice. When we lived in, when I lived in Colorado, I didn't have the racism. When I walk through Brookline myself, I don't have the racism. When I walk through with my husband, I see how people look at us differently. If I'm a little bit further away, a half-block away, I really see how people respond to my husband and kids. It is different. So when I was doing my dissertation research, it was on interpersonal conflict at Hewlett-Packard. It was very instructive there, what I learned. First of all, most everybody denounced racism. There are few people that said, "People of color don't belong in the workplace here." That was a small percentage. But what we saw is that many, many, many white people said hurtful, racist things to people of color, and I was one of them. Okay? Now, this is after I was already married to my husband. Okay? And I had done my research and so forth in race conflict. I saw Tasha at the teller machine in the workplace. We always used to make jokes with whoever's getting the cash out. "Hey, get me a 20. It's the Friday. I need some money." Do you know what came out of my mouth that day when I saw Tasha? "Hey, don't you steal all that money." That is an example of the subconscious bias that all white people have growing up in a racist society.[1516.01][1516.01](APPLAUSE). We all are unintentionally, and some of us intentionally, racist. And so what that means is, please, I beg of you, I beg of you, everyone here, believe that we are racist. Believe that we can make a difference if we take action. The question is not, was there racism or not? Instead, the question is, are we going to be the people that change society?[1551.12][1551.12](APPLAUSE).
Abram Chipman, and after Mr. Chipman is Shantu Salvi.
I've been a Brookline resident for 40 years, and I've been a Brookline resident for 40 years, in Precinct 10. I also am a retired psychologist, and very interested in the ways in which people avoid facing problems, as well as what the problems are. I think Brookline's racism is not necessarily better or worse, or less or more than many, many other communities, because it pervades the United States. We have different ways of coping with it, however, because we're a town with a very good educational system, a lot of sophisticated people who can talk their way around almost anything.[1616.73][1616.73](LAUGHTER). And we have, we have good libraries and a commitment to, to thinking and, and education. So what we see happening is that attitudes of bigotry are really not looked at. They're covered over with refinement and with false liberalism.[1643.16][1643.16](APPLAUSE). And it almost reminds me of what you see with alcoholics. The denial, the use of what we call dissociation. You know, it isn't me that did it, or it was somebody else when I, when I said something insensitive. It was just accidental. It was, it was the other guy, and I'm not that way. Or the police will say, "We're not out to harass black folks in Brookline. We're out to catch all those people who are driving through town from somewhere else and have broken taillights." And it's, it's, it's put at a distance, and the, the effect is to pretend it doesn't exist. So the first step is, I believe, with my limited knowledge of Alcoholics Anonymous, is that one has to stop denying and admit that one is in the grip of a profound and destructive disease, and that one may or may not be powerless to stop it. One has to begin acknowledging it and then finding ways to stop it. And I think some of my predecessors on this podium tonight have talked about many things that need to be done, including that the police need to adopt a policy of zero tolerance, because police departments have had problems with the, with black communities, and people are saying it can't happen here, but it can happen here. And what can even happen within the police department, that's a sign of how much trouble we're in and how hard we have to work and to start challenging it and putting it into it.
Shantu Salvi, and after Mr. Salvi, David Klofter.
My name is Shantu Salvi, and I'm a former employee of the Brookline Schools, and a current parent of two students in the Brookline Schools right now. When I worked in Brookline from about 2001 to about 2005, in the Steps to Success program, I was leaving I was leaving my office at the Lincoln School and was standing next to my car when an unmarked car drove by on an adjacent street, stopped, put the car in reverse, and came down the street that I was on. An officer rolled down the window, asked me who I was, what I was doing there, and for some identification. And once I offered my identification and explained what I was doing there, he gave me the typical excuse of fitting the description that I'm sure others in the room can relate to, and drove off. And so I took this issue to the police department, to Internal Affairs, and we sat in a room together, the officer and myself, and nothing came of it. And I add my story to this forum so that we can see clearly, when we add all these things together, to realize that this is not an issue of a few rotten apples, of some isolated incidents of those bad races. And to recognize this for what it is, which is institutionalized and systemic racism, which permeates Brookline as it does any other town or city in this country. And I felt compelled to speak tonight also, because I get scared, as other people have mentioned, that my sons walking down the street may not be safe, or as safe, as other people's children in this room. And I would like to know what is going to be done to start making some real changes in making some dense and institutionalized racism in this town. And if this organization is not able to do it, then they need to go.
Mr. Klofter, and after Mr. Klofter is Linda Cutting.
Hi, I'm David Klofter. I've been a resident of Brookline for about 23 years, and I'm a town meeting member from precinct 12. When I first moved here, I started hearing from friends, people of color, mostly who didn't live in Brookline, about the problem of driving while black in Brookline. And I heard it often enough from enough different people that I couldn't dismiss it, but I have to admit that because I didn't have any problem, I really maybe didn't give it the importance that I should have. Later, when I became a town meeting member and started paying a lot more attention to what, what went on on a regular basis in the town, I saw in a number of instances that the town was very good at setting up committees to study things around race, and very poor about actually coming up with a determination that there was, in fact, some racist practice going on. That almost never happened. I noted when I was, when we were discussing employment in town, at the time, there were zero department heads who were people of color. Out of 27, I remember thinking, zero for 27. Boy, if you're an athlete and you're zero for 27 in anything, that's hard. It's hard to be that bad. But yet and still, the way that was approached was, we have a problem, we have a little problem, we're going to study it, but it's really a complicated issue, and it's really hard to recruit people, and et cetera, et cetera. My experience in the private sector is it's really usually not that hard to solve problems when you've decided you want to. And I think that... I think Dr. Chipman pointed out that the first step is admitting you have a problem. But there's trouble with that, because if you really admit you have a problem, that means you have to try to solve it. And to solve a real problem, rather than a minor perceived problem, means that you're going to have to do some shakeups in the town that are very uncomfortable for a lot of people. You have to be willing to do that. Now, I don't really have a great deal of confidence that we, as a town, have the stomach for that. I hope I'm wrong. I hope those of us in the room can see to it that we're wrong. But we should know that this isn't a discussion that's just happening in Brookline. This is happening in towns all across the country, in many, many, many places, issues far worse. I hope we can deal with it. Thank you.
Ms. Cutting, and after Ms. Cutting is Ken Rosen.
Yes, I would like to thank the board for having the courage to admit your mistake in walking out on us on the 22nd of December, and for calling this hearing tonight. I restored some of my trust in town government. I'm here for Prentice Pilot, who's a personal friend of mine. I am also here for Officer Zee, who I've come to admire and respect. But I am mostly here for my kids, and I need to say why. As a white woman, I never really experienced or understood racism until my six-year-old daughter was affronted by a large white man coming out of a Red Sox game and told, "You don't belong here. You're one of those adopted Asian kids. Go back where you came from." And the way I comforted her was to try to tell her that we live in Brookline, a town of diversity and racial tolerance, and that kind of thing wouldn't happen in our town. And I'm very concerned about being able to tell her that now, especially in light of what's happened, what's come to light about the racial insults that have been hurled at two highly respected officers. And not just that, but also the fact that these officers, who don't feel safe returning to their workplace because of being brave enough to go public about it, are now being ordered to come back to work by the police chief. I really think that as our police commissioners, that you, the board, do have the power to give these two highly respected officers leave while this investigation is going on, so I wanted to say one more thing about Officer Pilot, and that is that while our son was going through a difficult time in the Brookline Public Schools in middle school, Officer Pilot helped him to feel safe and helped him to feel self-respect, something that only an officer who deeply cares about children could do. And I know I'm one of many, many grateful parents, but I just have to say that considering what both of these officers have done for our children, I really think it's time that you, our selectmen, step up to the plate and help them through this difficult time when they don't feel safe returning to work. Thank you very much.
Ken Rosen.
I'm going to talk in my spot.
Thank you. Sally Moore, and Ki... Okay. Ki Van De Zeele.
Kayah.
Kayah, sorry. And then the next person who's up is Irv Kirkie, I think. Ms. Van De Zeele?
So my name is Kayah Van De Zeele, also known as Cornelia Van De Zeele, same person. Town meeting member from precinct 15, a commissioner on the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. And there will be a statement coming from the commission. We worked hard on this one yesterday. I don't think I have much to add. I just would like to encourage you to all look at the big picture here and not try to find fault with individual little, little things with something. You know, as I said at the meeting on the 22nd, at the end, there are two issues here. One is the immediate security of these officers and how they feel on this job, the two police officers, and the other is the big issue. And I want to thank everybody who's come and spoken about this. You know, as someone else said, "I'm a white woman. I don't see this." But almost every time I am in a place speaking to people of color, especially men, there is a story, like many of these stories you've heard. And I would just like you to take that all into consideration. There's a problem here. We need to deal with it.
Irv Kirkie. After Mr. Kirkie, Kirk, is Rogelio Rotus. Mr. Rotus. And after Mr. Rotus is Scott Murphy.
Hi, thanks for giving me the chance to speak. I'm here in support of Officer Pilot. I've known for a long time. I worked at T. Andrews for 25 years, which is at the Board of Brookline in Boston. So I've known a lot of officers. And let me tell you this. I'm originally from Guatemala, and I look fair-skinned, but when you see my name, Rogelio Rotus, obviously, in my accent, you know I'm Hispanic. A few years back, I have, by the way, I have four boys in the Brookline system. And a few years back, the two older ones, they were at the time 10 and 12, they were assaulted by a white man, older man. To make a long story short, filed a report, three months went by, nothing was done. I was extremely frustrated. I didn't know what to do. And I still lost. I don't know what happened. Now, more recently, when the bridge was torn down on High Street, I was assaulted verbally and physically by an officer. Now, unfortunately, I didn't know that one. I went, filed a report, spoke to, I don't remember who I spoke to, but it was, go here, go there. Three months later, nothing's done. So I believe that something has to change, not just because you're black or white, but just in the human sense. Something has to be done, not because you know this one or you're white, but something has to be done. Thanks.
Mr. Murphy, and Savian Kohn is...
Hi, my name is Scott Murphy. I'm a resident in 160 Chestnut. I'd been asked to let this lady, Alana Baez, speak. She has to leave in front of me. I don't know if she signed up there. I had signed up to speak originally, but when they changed the format, I didn't speak. I didn't sign up to speak tonight, but I'd like to make a few comments.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Juan Abayes. My name is Juan Abayes. I live in Brookline since 2009. I was so excited to live in Brookline because I have my kids. And I was so excited to move on here in Brookline because my oldest son, and to go to school. But after August 2015 last year, I had an incident with Brookline Police. I just had a baby July 27. I came home with my newborn, and I just had a C-section. And I had an incident when the tow truck, tow truck company, Robert's Tow Truck, and they wanted, my boyfriend was helping me with the groceries. He was helping me with the kids at home. He brought some grocery, he dropped off some grocery at home, and he parked the car on the back door. There wasn't even any signs there that say, "No parking there." They said, "There's a fire line." It's not even there. So the tow truck just put my car on the tow, on the tow bed. They tried to tow my car. My boyfriend went downstairs and said, "You know, I'm just helping with the grocery. I just parked there for one minute." He called the police, and the police came. The other guy, the tow driver, called the police too. My boyfriend called the police first, and the police came. And then the first thing, I went downstairs with the baby in my arms, my newborn, three weeks old. And the first thing, he just came and started yelling at me and asking me for my ID. I'm sorry. And he was asking me about if I have a passport. I was like, he was yelling all the time. And I'm like, "You don't have to yell at me. We just called you to help." And he was like, "But you are yelling at the tow driver. You broke his window." That wasn't even true. The window was fine. One of my neighbors told the officer, "She just had a baby. She just had a C-section, and she is, you know, she had a newborn in her arms." And then how, I'm just, you know, trying to talk with the guy, say, "This is my car. Why are you towing my car?" "We're trying to pay." And he did, he refused it. The police just came and accused me and said, "You did this. You yelled at him. You say the F-word to him." He was saying the B-word to me all the time, the F-word to me all the time. He didn't even care. I have a baby in my arms. So from now on, I feel like it's so scary, and I'm safe in Brookline, because I don't want to even call the Brookline Police anymore, because I don't know what they're going to do to me because I'm Spanish, because I'm a black. I don't know who's going on here. To conclude, I just feel I'm not safe here anymore, even my kids. I just want to, you know, have a better environment for them, and I don't want that they feel they want to grow up in the town, they'll be racist because they're Spanish or black. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Hi, Neil, fellow selectman. Again, I didn't ask to speak up. I'm not on the list, and somebody put me on the list. I did speak to Patty previously, but when they changed the format, I decided not to. But I realize that, I realize that this is only part of this need for a solution, that you only represent a portion of the town, and our schools represent a large portion of the town. And I'd like to encourage these people to also voice their feelings and their, you know, their feelings, a need for solutions to racism, to our school committee members as well. I spoke at the school committee meeting a couple of months ago, asking why the students from Brookline didn't attend the Minority Student Achievement Network Conference out in Madison, Wisconsin this year. I still haven't received an answer. There was some suggestion that the Steps to Success people dropped the ball on it, but I, again, I haven't really heard an answer. But I would like to encourage a discussion in the school department as well, because my children and I have been exposed to a lot of institutional racism, particularly up at Runcle School. And when we speak out, we've been retaliated against by the police, by others in the town. And I feel it's unfortunate that the police get put in the middle of those things. But my son has had warrants issued for his arrest and various other things. He doesn't care to come and speak here tonight because he fears more retaliation. My daughter would be happy to, but she's out of the country for the first time. And I look forward to speaking and continuing this discussion in the future and having them part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to speak to my fellow citizens.
And after Dr. Kohn is Gabrielle Krosinski.
I'm going to speak to my fellow citizens who clearly care tremendously about Brookline and about justice. And I'm not going to say what I had prepared. I'm going to tell a few more details from Juana Baez's story, because I know her. And I know that when she spoke Spanish to her boyfriend in that incident, she was told, "Stop speaking that language, or I'll put more charges on you." I know that her boyfriend, who called the police, he was the one who made the 911 call, was cuffed, put in the car, and arrested, and now has a record. I know that Juana had to go to court herself and pay money. And I know that mysteriously, this woman, who, if you knew her, is an impeccable mother, and her kids are amazing, had a visit shortly thereafter from DSS. But the DSS woman said to her, and this is a quote, "Your problem is the color of your skin in Brookline." Brookline is known to be racist. And she closed the case and refused to continue to investigate it. Don't look surprised. Please don't look surprised. This isn't a news story. So what I'm here to do is to beg you guys to not forget, not let time go by, not be satisfied by hearing the same things we always hear, which is, "It's under investigation. Results are inconclusive. It's a process. We care deeply. We value diversity. We all have the same goal. We can't say anything because of confidentiality," et cetera, et cetera. When you came in here tonight, we had a chance to speak this time, but you were very, very, it was very conscript in what you could say, right? "Don't ask questions. No attacks. You can't do this." I mean, man, they laid it out for us. We are in the box. We are supposed to do something a very narrow way. What I'm asking you to do is not forget about the officers. One of the things they said to us is that we couldn't ask them questions. We couldn't ask them questions. So that means I can't say to them, well, I can. I can say it to you. One of the things I wonder is how, during the time they were supposedly apologizing to us for fleeing the room, they were also, the chief of police was going to Officer Z's home, stopping, with a letter from the chief of police, excuse me, stopping his pay and telling him to report to work the next workday. He couldn't have done that without your permission, your knowledge and your consent. He had to have had everyone. And if he didn't, you certainly could have reversed it with a phone call. Please don't forget.
Gabriella Kroserski, please correct my pronoun, Krosinski, and Mariela Ames is after that.
First of all, I'd like to thank the men that work for Steps of Success. It's an amazing program. I'm a mother of three children. Two of them are in devotion school. I'm one of the PTO co-chairs in devotion school. And I love devotion school. I love devotion school because of the diversity, the huge diversity that we have there. I've never, I'm so naive because I've never known that this was happening. I thought that I was in the best place in the world in devotion school, where we have about 20% Israeli families. We have a lot of children that come from low-income, low-income families. And I just, I just thought that I was in the best place in the world. And I'm naive. I'm sorry. I just did not, I'm shocked to have heard all these stories. I did not know that this was happening in our town. I want to thank the two officers for coming out, because if you have not come out, I would have continued being naive. And I'd, and I think that we would all continue our lives as we did before. So because of the two of you, this issue is being talked about. One last thing that I would like to say is that it's hard for me to hear that the officers are being told that it's okay to go back to work and that they can feel safe going back to work, because if you do not feel safe, then you just do not feel safe. And, you know, if you have a child that's scared of the dark, you don't tell them, "It's okay. Don't be afraid," you know? You turn on the light for them, right? So I would like to ask you guys to reconsider that statement. And if, as someone said before, if they do decide not to go back to work, that at least they continue getting their pay. Thank you.
Ms. Ames, and after Ms. Ames is Fred Levitan.
You know me. I've been here before. Mariela Ames, I am a town meeting member, and I am the former chair of the proactively abolished Human Relations Commission, abolished by you, Selectmen, with the blessing of town meeting. That's what you have said, and maneuvered that way. So we heard that we're going to hear a statement from the current human, not human, I'm sorry, Diversity and Inclusion and Community Relations Commission, whose power to investigate complaints of discrimination have been stripped by you also. So now employees of the town, the schools or police are not allowed to go to the commission, or at least they're allowed to go, but they are not to expect really unless they want to go and waste their time. But let's see. Selectmen Green at some point said, "Well, you will have the boly pulpit." And I don't know what that means. You have heard, though, firsthand reports of discrimination about racist conduct tonight. We demand action. You've heard also for action. We are years and years of your tired, of your investigations, independent reviews, processes that need to be created, processes, commissions, committees, et cetera. We are demanding action, and the time is now. And when I say "action" right now, I do say, and I mean, to clean house. Clean house.
Mr. Levitan, and after Mr. Levitan is Martha Gray.
I'm sorry, normally I don't read things, but it's just the way it is tonight. It's a wonderful thing to come out and support these offices tonight, as everyone has done. Racism is a terrible thing. What you've done at the last meeting and again tonight is to attempt to convict the town of racism through anecdotal stories. In America, we're innocent until we're proven guilty, and unless we're proven guilty. Many of you believe the administration is ignoring your pleas for swift justice. There cannot be swift justice or a clean sweep, as Mariela has asked, without a proper investigation and proof of guilt. A number of you believe the police are the problem. I'm sorry, but I strongly feel that you're wrong. Here in Brookline, we're very fortunate to have Dan O'Leary as our chief of police. Chief O'Leary is as good a chief as is possible. He is an honorable man. I believe in his honesty and competency, and I think it is above question. And it sickens me when I hear people say that the chief may be biased, or when someone says the chief would never find one of his officers responsible for any wrongdoing. That's wrong and wrong again. Our Selectmen are citizen volunteers. They deserve to be treated with respect. They donate thousands of hours away from their families to serve the town. If you don't like what they do, don't vote for them. Better yet, become involved in the town and run for town meeting or Selectmen yourselves. See if you can do a better job.
Martha Gray, and after Ms. Gray is Demetrius Oviedo.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Martha Gray, Precinct 11, Town Meeting Member. And I've stood here before, and I've been at other meetings, and I'm a swirl of emotion. I'm incredulous. I'm ashamed. I'm disgusted. I'm in a conundrum. And I'm wondering why? Why, again, we have enough vignettes. We have enough stories. We have enough people coming to this board, to the town meeting, to the chief of police, to various community events where we talk about the racist activities that people have experienced. So I'm just wondering, why? How much more do we need? Do we need something to be murdered? Do we need something really, really egregious that's going to get us into the papers for things that we don't want to do before we are going to be willing to dismantle our white privilege, look at the racism in the town, and then put our brilliant heads together and make a plan that protects all of our people, all of our employees, all the people we say we care about? These two police officers had incredible courage to come out and let us know what happened to them. We realized what this means to them in terms of their potential to work in the force. And I'm just wondering what I can say as a mother, as an educator, as a town meeting member, as a citizen of this town, to move us, all of us, together? Because I am hopeful that if we really wanted to answer these problems, we could do it. What I'm left with is the questions that I have to say to my black son when he says, "Mom, why am I always followed in Brookline? Why, when I stand in front of my house with a group of friends, a police officer just happens to come by and ask me what I'm doing there? And then the police officer says to me, "Okay, what are you doing here?" And my son says, "I'm 21 years old. I go to school at a community college. I live in Austin. I'm back here, you know, wanting to be at my house." And the police officer will say, as he did before when my son was younger, "Well, what's, turn back and tell me what is the number of your house?" And my son says, "I live at 113 Summit Avenue. My mother is a town meeting member. My father's in acupuncture with an office on Harvard Street. I went to the Driscoll School. I graduated from Brookline High School, and I live here." So what am I supposed to tell him? And then when I did have that conversation with a very welcoming police chief, he said, "Well, have your son come in and talk to me, because we want to know about that." And my son said, "Are you kidding? I would never do that. I don't feel safe." And so there, I leave you with that vignette. One more in a whole litany of it in the town. We can, we must, and we will do better.
Alex Coleman is next. And after Alex Coleman is Owen Young.
Hi. Thank you for having this hearing, and thank you all for being here for the hearing. I'm Alex Coleman. I'm the current chair of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. We have spent the last year trying to move forward in a collaborative way, both internally with the Board of Select People, with Town Administrator, with department heads, and with the Town Council, among others. We had to undo some things, and we had to do a lot of work internally. And I think that in the year we've had, we've started to make some progress. And I had, last night, we had a meeting that was held consistent with the open meeting law, at which we came up with a statement. The statement isn't specifically about the two officers. It's about a pattern that we were starting to hear, including the two officers who had come to our previous meeting. Every single member of the commission who was present had a slightly different take, but we, in a manner of an hour and a half, were able to come up with the following statement, which I'm going to read to you, and I have copies for you. And I'm reading to, I'm presenting this as the chair on behalf of the commission. It's not that long. And it's meant in the spirit of collaboration, even though the words are somewhat harsh. "The Board of Selectmen, as an institution of town government, has allowed a culture of institutional racism to exist through its past hiring practices. As an example, in the history of this town's existence, there have been two department heads who are people of color. In the past five years, the town has allowed a firefighter, who without dispute, use the N-word, be promoted to a supervisory position. And the culture that such actions foster has led to situations which has brought us here today. The Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations calls upon you, as the elected leaders of this town, to exercise your responsibilities and duties as commissioners of the police and fire departments, as the elected representatives of this town, to stamp out this culture. There must not be a delay. You must act with expedience. There is a history in this town of not taking action on these matters in a timely manner. You must not repeat this history. This is a matter of extreme urgency, which the Board of Selectmen needs to address with actions, not words, now."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Owen Young is next. Owen Young, and after Owen Young is Mark McEwen. Owen Young going once. Okay. Mark McEwen, going once. Chelo Sandoval, or Carlos Sandoval, going once, twice.
Good evening. Is it cold outside? Yeah? I was actually wondering, at about 5:00, how many people were going to show up tonight? And I got my answer, okay? Because I think many of us were, you know, it's cold. Do we really need to be here? Okay? It's not like we need to be here. We have to be here. Right? And not only that, but, you know, you guys got a problem, but we have a collective problem. Okay? Right now, you got the words of two black men. And we know, as a legal historian, that black men, they're not going to be trusted when you got the words of two white men. Okay? The white man in court, institutionally, has always had the favor, the advantage, over the black man, over the brown man, over the yellow man. Over women, yes. Okay? So the question that I have is, why in the world would these two black men risking their jobs? Right? They are risking their jobs. Because if they feel unsafe, and if they do not follow the direction of the chief of police, the honorable chief of police, what's going to happen to them? They're going to be out of the job, right? Okay? So what do we want as citizens of this town? We want them to be on paid administrative leave. We are sick, we are sick and tired of more and more studies, okay? We are sick and tired of more diversity training. Why, why am I telling you that? Because I did those diversity training for the Brookline Police Department 27 years ago. I was a trainer. Okay? And you know what happened at the end of that training? Okay? A black police officer came up to me in the parking lot, say, "You know, I'm so glad, you know, you came and spoke, okay? But I got to tell you about all these racist things that is happening to me as a black officer on this force." So this is nothing new. Okay? It is simply a different regime by a different chief. You all got the power to make the change. The question is whether you have the courage, like these two black officers, risking their lives, risking their profession, to come forward and do the right thing. lives, risking their profession, to come forward and do the right thing.
Ellen Hertz is up next, and after Ms. Hertz is Kathleen Whalen. Ellen Hertz, going once. Kathleen Whalen, going once. Prebble Jocks, going once. Carolyn Copons, going once. Marty Rosenthal. I didn't see you, Mr. Rosenthal over there.
I was hiding. Thank you very much. I'm Marty Rosenthal. I'm a former selectman and many other things. I'll get to some of them later. I'm going to speak very fast. I have some written comments, which I'll leave for the record if you wish. I really appreciate everyone who's here, especially everyone who has spoken. My dad was a history teacher, and without minimizing any of the events that are now under investigation, I do want to recite some history about this department and about our police chief. In one of my proudest moments, and some of you may minimize this, 1987, the Police and Community Relations Report, we had hearings about racial profiling. It was an awful, awful circumstance that was going on. I actually believe it was worse than what's going on now. We did this report. It was adopted by five members of the Board of Selectmen, by four colleagues unanimously, five different sections, all unanimously adopted. It took two chiefs and 10 years until Chief O'Leary, until one of the sections got implemented, that was racial profiling data statistics. We were the first in the state to do that. Now 50 communities do it in the state. I've been trying to get it done statewide, and we're having issues with the state legislature. He's implemented lots of in-service training, mental health issues, diversity issues. Maybe they haven't done enough, but he's tried. In 2004, a bill was passed to OK taser guns. I for Brookline PACs and Josh Rubenstein for Amnesty met with the chief, and he decided not to do it. In 2007, Brookline got an award from the International Association of Police Chiefs for prestigious, for a civil rights award. In 2008, he volunteered to be one of eight communities in the state to do a study of racial profiling by traffic, traffic stop benchmark statistics by Northeastern Institute of Race and Justice. 2009, a Washington Post story on transparency of police departments said, "The highest ranking department is Brookline Mass. Austin and LA ranked second and third." 2013, the department got accreditation after a very rigorous process. Two or three years ago, he publicly acknowledged that everyone has unconscious bias, and he's favored police cameras, which have some complex legal and privacy issues. So before I get to my punchline as to all that, and at risk of bragging, I have to tell some of my credentials. I've been 20 years-
Please, please do so quickly, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, I will. I've been 20 years a public defender. I've been a criminal defense lawyer, two more decades. I've gotten two different Thurgood Marshall awards. I've been on the Board of ACLU, National Lawyers Guild, Mass Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers. I'm now on the State Sentencing Commission. I was on the 2009 Citizen Review Committee and the 2014 Diversity Committee. 2011, for diversity and tolerance, I tried to get the Pledge of Allegiance moved into assemblies, and that was something. And so with that background, and without complacency, I truly believe that there's no better police chief in this state. And I will not sugarcoat his or my occasional mistakes or the need to ask tough questions, but his commitment is obvious. 62% of this country lives in non-southern states. I believe that every single community, which is about 20,000 of those communities, are grappling with these issues, which is the legacy of the original sin of this country, slavery and what we did to the Native Americans. There are issues everywhere. Brookline has tried to deal with them. I don't look at the full side of the glass or the half-empty side of the glass. I only believe in the next part of the glass. And the next part of the glass is what everyone in this room, what the selectmen, what the chief, choose to do next. I welcome what's happened here tonight. I do think we can move forward as a community if we all try to act together. I welcome the new diversity commission, which I helped write the bylaw-
Please conclude, Mr. Rosenthal.
And I think that they are on the right track as well. I'd close with the comment of Martin Luther King. "We will all remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." We don't have silence in Brookline, and I thank God for that.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Cruz Sinabria.
I don't know how I can top Marty, but I'll try. It's nerve-wracking to be up here, and it's not easy. And it almost makes me feel like I'm experiencing what happened to me before. A number of years ago, when I was with the Vietnam Veterans Against the War March in Washington with John Curry, and Nixon tried to throw us all in jail, and the Supreme Court overruled him because of his authoritarian power. You guys know the history. You know what happened. In this case here, there's nobody that's going to overrule you at all. You guys have the power and the say here. In my situation, I have never been thrown in jail for any reason whatsoever, not in the military, as a disabled vet, anywhere, except when I protested against the war in Vietnam, when I took over Betsy Ross's house. We took over Betsy Ross's house, elicited demands, and Ramsey Clark bailed us out, the former Attorney General of the United States. But in this case here, I live at 20 Rice Street, and I had taken some barrels that were placed on the street into the driveway, and this was the job of the second floor, two ladies that live up there, and they took the barrels and placed it in front of my car. I called the police. The police came, and that's when I found out that they've called the police on me on several occasions. I had no idea. So one of the ladies, as she passes by me, pushes me in the hallway. Kept quiet, didn't say anything, didn't make a big deal out of it at all. The police left, leaving the barrels in front of my car, and nothing occurred. And that was in March of 2014. In November of 2014, I had come, I'm the president of the condo association, and there are bylaws and rules that I've always tried to implement that were not followed by the second floor. In November, I said to one of the tenants in the second floor, that, "It's too bad you gave me a minute because I'm not done, and I'm not going to stop until I'm done." The tenant in the second floor-
I will afford you the courtesy I afforded Mr. Rosenthal and let you go another two minutes.
Okay, but I don't have status here like he does. I am, I am-
He has the same status that he-
And you're taking my time away right now, and I don't like it. Mr., this lady comes up the stairs, and I said, "You have to remove your bicycle." She's in the cellar. She comes up the stairs, and she says, "No, and if you do anything to my bicycle, I'll call the police." So I go into my condo. The door shuts, and she calls the police on me, that the door almost hit her. So the police officer, Officer Hill, says to me, "Don't worry. Nothing's going to happen to you." I said, "Okay." I wasn't worried, and I always thought that every time they called the police, it was a waste of taxpayers' money. Two weeks later, on my birthday, I receive a letter from Brookline that states that I have to appear in court, or else I get five years in prison, felon, for something I never did, assault with a dangerous weapon. As it turns out, it was dismissed. But the horror that I went through, living that, was almost as bad as anything else that I've had in my life, including bullets flying over me. It's the distress, the harassment. And so, as it turns out, why didn't somebody press charges against the second-floor tenant that pushed me in the hallway? And that is in the police records. I asked the chief, I asked Campbell, and I asked Officer Hill, when I sat with them with Bill Gaines in his office, did he check the records? Did he read the records? He said, "Yes, we did." Well, he didn't do his job. You put me in a position that I should not have been in. Why? Because I'm Puerto Rican, and those are two white women? Because I'm a teacher that teaches in Roxbury? Because I'm a homeowner, and you don't like it? Because I was in the diversity committee, and we had you testify how many minorities you have in the police department, and you didn't like it? Why? Unfair. Unfair.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our speakers list, and thank you all for the respectful comments. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, now we're back to the more normal stuff that we do. I'm not going to, does anyone have any announcements that they want to? Okay, so let's do, let's approve the minutes. Where's Bernard? Where's Selectmen Green?
We've got a corner.
We have the minutes of December 22nd. I have a tiny edit. Anyone else?
Do you have any edits?
No. Okay, so I'm going to move acceptance of the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is the question of accepting a donation in the amount of $100 from Christopher Dipple and Christine Santos to be used in connection with Town Hall Walls program. Mr. Faison?
Good evening. Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. Town received a check for $100.
It's a bad one. Neil can't even get your name right.
Yeah. It's been one of those nights, huh? It's one of those nights. So $100 from Christopher Dipple and Christine Santos for the Town Hall Walls program.
Okay. We're grateful that-
That's very nice. There's nothing up right now, but I want to say I usually do enjoy having the artwork up, and we appreciate the contribution.
Right, and-
Small artwork up there.
Right, and down in-
Oh, are those, I thought those were like-
Those, yeah.
Photographs of things to come.
Room 103, there's stuff up right now.
Those are actual-
I think so.
Oh, okay.
So I will move that we accept the donation of $100 from Christopher Dipple and Christine Santos to be used in connection with the Town Hall Walls program. All those in favor? Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question for approving the application of Kodo Japanese, Inc., doing business as Osaka Japanese Restaurant, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverages license as a common vitular at 14 Green Street, for the appointment of Dingui Lin as an alternate We don't usually, for appointment of an alternate manager, we don't ask that they appear.
Now, the fingerprint check is not back yet, though, so can I ask that this vote be conditioned on favorable results from that?
Right, okay. I'll take that motion. Any other questions, comments? So the motion is acceptance of the application conditioned on the successful completion of the fingerprint check for Kodo Japanese, doing business as Osaka Japanese Restaurant of an all kind alcohol beverage license, as a common vitular at 14 Green Street, for the appointment of Dingui Lin as an alternate manager with the condition I just described. All those in favor? Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have two temporary licenses. The first is malt, oh, I always do that, wine and malt beverage license to Pine Manor College for a banquet, which I'll describe when I set out the motion. And the other one is for an all kinds beverage license temporary for BU, which I'll describe when I set out the motion. The police department has reviewed the applications, and they're in order. So I will move the question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with the banquet to be held on February 11th from 5:30 to 9:30 at 400 Heath Street. This event was originally scheduled and approved for January 13th, so it's just a movement of the date, I guess. And also, I'm going to move that we grant the temporary all kind alcoholic beverage license to BU, Boston University, in connection with a reception to be held on January 22nd, 2016, from 8:00 to midnight at 808 Commonwealth Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we're on to the main calendar. And the first, first item is for the registered marijuana dispensary host community agreement. And Mr. Kleckner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure this evening to recommend, for the selectmen's approval, a host community agreement with New England Treatment Access, otherwise known as NEDA, who will be opening a registered medical marijuana dispensary in Brookline shortly. Despite the medical benefits that cannabis may provide, the siting of medical marijuana dispensaries in Massachusetts creates uncertainty and anxiety for cities and towns. In addition, the law authorizing the sale of medical marijuana mandates that companies operating dispensaries be nonprofit entities. With this in mind, the cities and towns who are hosts of a dispensary or a grow facility had an expectation that a formal agreement would ensue between the host community and the municipal, excuse me, between the dispensary and the municipality that would provide some financial benefits, and that the municipality would guarantee that proceeds from the sale of cannabis would be properly expended on appropriate charitable and community purposes. And although this expectation was not universally shared by the medical marijuana industry, so it did take a lot of communication and effort to make this agreement a reality. I did task the town's finance director, Stephen Cirillo, with the responsibility of surveying other cities and towns and negotiating an agreement that would meet the town's goals. Assisted by Town Council, Charles M. Murphy, Mr. Cirillo was eventually successful in reaching an agreement with NEDA, subject to the Board of Selectmen's approval. This agreement establishes a unique arrangement with the Brookline Community Foundation to distribute one half of the revenues of this agreement for local charitable purposes. I'm extremely grateful to Steve Cirillo for his diligent and persistent efforts on behalf of the town of Brookline, and to NEDA for their willingness to enter into this agreement. I'd like to ask Steve Cirillo to detail a little bit more of the- I'd like to ask Steve Cirillo to detail a little bit more of the terms of this agreement.
Good evening. I'd like to begin my comments this evening by mentioning some people who helped make this agreement possible. First of all, in the NEDA organization, there were several people who participated, but I, I'd like to mention two in particular. First, I wanna say that the town is grateful to Howard Kessler, the financial backer of this project, for his generosity to the town and to its citizens. When the discussions began to stall, it was Mr. Kessler who stepped in and moved everybody forward. I also wanted to thank Bob Allen, the local attorney representing NEDA's interest. Bob was phenomenal in this, he just kept everybody at the table, and he's, he did a sensational job, and I wanna thank Bob for that. I also wanted to thank the Brookline Community Foundation for, they played a vital role in this agreement. I wanted to particularly thank Jenny Amory, the executive director of the foundation, for all of her time and effort. We had a lot of interesting conversations, Jenny and I, on this agreement. It was, she was very helpful in helping us getting this agreement completed. Finally, I wanna mention the people on the town's team, the compromise town's team. First, we were led by our leader, Mel Kleckner, and Dr. Alan Bosom, the Director of Public Health, and also from Jocelyn Maria Murphy, our town council. I wanna particularly mention Jocelyn, who did an extraordinary amount of work on this, and very talented individual. She is a real asset to the town. I also wanted to mention the town's planning department, particularly the economic development and zoning staff, for helping us and providing us what's some, what's some insights that allowed us to develop our initial proposals. Now, it's accurate to say that this was a complicated and challenging task, spanning 15 months with multiple participants, and each participant had multiple players in their team, and each of those players on the team had expectations of how the final agreement was going to look. It was particularly challenging. In the early stages of the discussion, the town surveyed the other communities that had host agreements, and concluded that the most common agreement was based on a percentage of gross revenue, going to a host community with a portion of these funds being distributed in a charitable component. The most common agreement had a percentage of about 3% of gross revenue. Now, the, the town was fully accepting of the charitable component, but we would determine that, that the funds would be directed to a local charity rather than regional or national charities. And after reviewing all our options, we decided to select the Brookline Community Foundation as the primary grant recipient for this charitable component. The foundation was uniquely positioned to participate in this activity. It's a well-run organization which has the skills and experience to accept funds, review applications for worthy causes, and distribute funds on a fair basis. It currently aids such local groups as the Brookline Mental Health Organization, the Youth Center, local food banks, just to name a few projects that they're involved in. Now, the final agreement itself included an annual gift which phased up to 3% over a few years, I believe it's over a five-year period of time, and then after that, a 200.5% inflation on that amount. Half of these funds would be directed to the Brookline Community Foundation, as outlined in a separate agreement between the foundation and NEDA. The host community agreement also establishes how issues such as the future local option excise tax, or the potential legalization would be handled. Although currently, these two conditions do not exist, both parties reach consensus on how to treat these possible future occurrences. So, I believe it's a fair agreement, and I recommend that the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator to accept or sign this document. And I would like to turn the podium over to Jenny Amory to make comments on behalf of the foundation.
Can I, can I just say, before you leave, Steve, that, I don't know if you have any more in the pipeline, or this is your last one before you leave us, but I, and I think everyone on this board certainly appreciates all the hard work you've done for the town on, on this and many other pilot agreements.
Thank you very much.
Let me begin by saying that the Brookline Community Foundation is honored to be designated by the town of Brookline as the primary grant recipient of the proposed host community agreement. As the only community foundation in town, our mission is to shine a spotlight on community needs, inspire philanthropy, and award strategic grants to build a more vibrant, engaged, and equitable Brookline. We so appreciate the town's recognition that a community foundation is uniquely positioned to provide support for all residents. With both flexibility and expertise, community foundations have the capacity to identify and respond to current needs while building long-term assets for the future of a community through its endowment. Since 1999, BCF has given over $5 million to more than 100 nonprofits in Brookline. As many of you know, this year we published a second report called Understanding Brookline: A Report on Poverty. Well, why did we publish this report? Because in our first report, so many residents of Brookline were surprised and often shocked to learn that poverty increased from 9 to 13% from 2000 to 2010. And data shows that 1 in 3 residents are economically insecure, that is, living at, at below 300% of the poverty level, which is an indicator of need and vulnerability. The need in Brookline is often invisible. Through this report, we were able to dig deeper into the data and provide residents and town leaders with a more detailed picture of the demographics of our community, and to explore resources and opportunities to offer support. Should the Board of Selectmen approve this host community agreement with NEDA, the funds given to the Brookline Community Foundation will be used to set up an endowed field of interest fund focused on health and wellness. Currently, BCF provides grants that range in size from a few hundred dollars to 120,000. Whether small or large, grants can have a significant impact in the community. Past grants that fit into this field of interest of health and wellness include funding for dental screenings of low-income residents through the Brookline Department of Public Health, nutritional support for seniors through Springwell, an exercise program for low-income seniors through the Brookline Council on Aging, and food costs for the opening of a second location in public housing for the Brookline Food Pantry. In addition, each year, BCF provides more than $100,000 in funding to the BCF Safety Net Program, which is administered by the Brookline Community Mental Health Center to meet critical, urgent, short-term needs of our neighbors for food, fuel, and shelter. For example, in the first nine months of 2015, 537 residents were given direct aid, including 269 children. These are just a sampling of the types of programs BCF has supported in the past relating to health and wellness. With the creation of a new fund by NEDA, we will be able to do so much more, and there is so much more need. In 2015, we had about 579,000 in requests, and were able to fund only 64%, or about 363,000. NEDA has shared with us that they wanna be a good neighbor and support the community. Should the host community agreement be approved, we see the possibility of an infusion of funds that would truly have a positive impact on the health and wellness of residents in our community. Stephen mentioned that this was over 15 months, and I wanna, I wanna share, I just wanna thank you so much, the town of Brookline, especially Mel Kleckner and Jocelyn Murphy, for your leadership on this, and particularly for the many, many meetings and work that Stephen Cirillo has done with us. I think what is deeply touching to me is that this agreement reflects your commitment, Stephen, on behalf of the town, to really take care and support the most vulnerable in this town. I wanna appreciate the entire Board of Selectmen. Thank you for working collaboratively with BCF to increase resources for those most in need. Thank you.
Well, just, yeah, I'm, I'm very proud that we, as a community, were able to come to an agreement. This is an agreement that is very similar, perhaps even better, than agreements in other communities, as I understand it. And I think it's, it's fantastic that we can endow a fund at the Brookline Community Foundation. I just wanna make it clear to the public that this is an agreement surrounding the payment of certain monies to offset some of the impacts of the marijuana dispensary.
It's, it's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Correct.
Since this is a nonprofit.
Not technically, but it is.
Close enough, right.
They do pay taxes, actually.
Right.
Oh, okay, never mind.
And this is in addition to the licensing, the extensive license conditions that we approved two weeks ago, and is in addition to the conditions on the land use approved by the Board of Appeals. So this, this is kinda the, the last step prior to NEDA being able to open up and get going. Anyone wanna say anything?
Maybe they wanna say something.
I'll just be brief. That Cirillo's like a dog on a bone, isn't he? No, I mean, you know, the thank yous were all given, and, you know, when NEDA first came to the community, they said that this was one of the best, best-funded organization in the Commonwealth. As I've got to know these people, I think this is exactly the type of group that you want in this town, and I'm very proud that the board went through the process and, and put the conditions in place, and did, did the process the right way, the way it should be done. You know, Mel spelled out sort of the, the process that got us here today with this agreement. A lot of it wasn't so much sort of argument, is that we had to comply with both our bylaws as a nonprofit, and DMH had certain regulations, we had to make sure we complied with that. But we believe that we have an agreement that, like you said, Mr. Chairman, offset some of the costs associated with it, while also acknowledging that the Brookline Community Foundation is the type of entity that, that we, as good civic community leaders, what we hope to be, wanna support. So Jenny and her organization is great, we all know that, and, you know, NEDA jumped all over the opportunity to do that. So I thank Steve and the town, and I thank Jenny and her team for allowing us to work with you, and we are anxiously awaiting to serve some of these patients that you heard, and I think next time we're back before you, you will be proud that you went through this process and, and allowed us to do business in this community.
So I only have one question. A burning question. When are you opening?
Well, that's a good question. We still have, we still have some final construction underway, DPH has to come out. If I said January 16th, that's kind of the day that's floating out there, but that's what we hope, we're hoping for, as soon as possible.
Great.
We, we have, we're getting a lot of phone calls, though, so that's good.
I'll join the parade of thank yous. I think this is an agreement that none of us on the board had an active role in negotiating, so congratulations, thanks to, to Jenny Amory and the Brookline Community Foundation, to Steve Cirillo, and to Jocelyn Murphy, and to Mel on the town's part, and to the NEDA team, and I'll begrudgingly thank Bobby as well for keeping everybody at the table. I think...
Begrudgingly.
Begrudgingly.
We can't, we can't let our head get too big.
You know that.
I think this is, it's a fair agreement, and I'm happy that we could come to terms and, and move forward and, and open a facility to help patients that's gonna benefit not only those patients, but also the Brookline community.
I'll, I'll just say, I think this is obviously a substantial amount for the Brookline Community Foundation that, that they can do a lot with, and I just wanna put in my thought. I hope you will think about some kind of health thing to get kids more active, because of the, you know, sort of rates of childhood obesity, which kind of sets up lifelong health problems, I think. If we, you can do something to combat that, it would be great. So I'll just try to plant the seed in your mind.
Thank you for your input.
Can I just say something? Sure, by all means. You know, any business operating in any town is gonna draw from the resources of that town, police, fire, other resources of the town. And this business, as we heard during the hearing, could draw a significant amount of resources from the town. I think citizens of Brookline should, should know that this agreement is providing some offset that, that we should consider to be very significant to those resources that will be supporting this business like, like we support other businesses. And it's not a pilot, but I think it should be seen as a way in which, you know, the costs that we incur by providing the foundations upon which, you know, you can operate will be addressed, will be covered, so. So I, I hope the citizens realize that. Anyone else? Then I'll move that we, what am I moving? That we accept a host community agreement with New England Treatment Access, Inc., in connection with the regional marijuana dispensary to be located, registered marijuana, not regional, dispensary, to be located at 160 Washington Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item is setting the annual town meeting and election dates. It's election season, and town meeting season is upon us.
Good evening.
Ms. Goff?
You have in front of you a schedule for the 2016 annual town meeting, where we have a warrant opening on February 11th, and a warrant closing on March 10th, a town election on May 3rd, and then the town meeting commencing on May 24th. I've run the schedule by the moderator and the town clerk, and so with your agreement, we can go ahead and...
So this is the traditional week before Memorial Day, as, here, here we are, you know, it's...
No, it's going over to...
It starts the week before Memorial Day, and we're doing Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, which is...
Which I wanna say I, I voted against.
As did I, but...
Still stand by, I think that drags it out too long, but...
Well, this is democracy, we had a vote.
Yeah, well, I think the, I think the moderator said we were gonna go to the alternate schedule, right?
Yeah, so, well, no, he, he took a, he got a sense of the room.
Yeah.
It was democracy. So just highlight the dates again. February 11th is when the warrant opens, March 10th is when it closes. The town election will be on the first Tuesday in May, which is, happens to be May 3rd this year, and town meeting will begin on May 24th. So if everyone is in agreement with that schedule, I will move that we set the dates for the annual town meeting and election in accordance with the schedule we just described. All those in favor, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that's when town meeting and the election is gonna be. Thank you. And I think that concludes our business for tonight.
Fourth meeting.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.